Welcome to James Island Public Service District's special meeting to ratify, well, no, actually change the rules of procedure. Thank you. I am going to ask Commissioner Poston to say a prayer and then lead us in the pledge.
Well, that is good. I'd like to say thank you to everyone for your diligence and dedication, and I hope that we can be together tonight to work for the community and those who work for us and who are providing us with their residents. So, if you all will please work together and be positive and happy that we are together with PST. Thank you.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Sandy, happy birthday to you.
Is this considered an unexpected emergency? And I would actually now like to ask every commissioner to send us the month or day of their birthday so we can...
In your own minute.
Mr. White, may we have the Freedom of Information Act.
Freedom of Information Act. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice that this meeting and its adjourned to a revocation of the community and persons requesting notification.
May we have the roll call.
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Engelman.
Here.
Commissioner Lawton.
Here.
Commissioner Quaid.
Here.
Commissioner Poston.
Here.
Commissioner Woolsey.
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask for a hand so that I can get your permission to ask Ms. Clifford to be the chairman of the night. Short agenda, no, just handle that. Hands.
I have no problem.
Okay, we have a majority vote. Ms. Clifford, you are now chair.
And we have to change seats for the music.
For the night. Chair for the night. And there's candy up here if anybody wants them. I don't want to care about candy, but chair, chair. Don't like it. I don't like my singing.
This is a consent agenda, and the first item is wastewater committee meeting minutes from October 16th of this year. Have y'all had a chance to review these and are there any changes?
I know that we said to you, uh, committee report, uh, next for both A and B.
It may have a second that whatever voice was going.
Sorry.
Any discussion in the room?
Did you check in? Yes, I did. Okay, shall we have a roll call?
Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yeah.
Commissioner Engelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton.
Yeah.
Commissioner Quaid.
Hi.
Commissioner Poston.
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey.
Yeah.
Motion for a motion. And that will suffice for both A and B. And the introduction of a new bond attorney for the district. We would like to do the introduction.
I just appreciate that sent y'all an email with a letter, and I appreciate y'all reading it.
Can you please get it in front so I can see it?
Yes. Change game, let's see a vote. I appreciate y'all reading the letter and taking the time to email and respond. And I've invited C.D. Rhodes and Lawrence Flynn from Pope Flynn here to introduce himself, and I think C.D.'s gonna take the next step.
That's getting me a big hand.
Thank y'all. It is a real pleasure to be back in front. It's only a few months ago when we were working through the tax credit stuff, so I'm happy to be back. As James said, C.D. Rhodes, I'm with Pope Flynn. In addition to, you know, kind of dealing with sticky issues like that tax credit issue, kind of our firm's primary focus is really public finance. That's what we do the most of. We represent cities, counties, obviously lots of special purpose districts, in addition to the state, to various state universities, in issuing debt. It's probably more than half of our firm's total practice. We represent probably more special purpose districts than any firm in South Carolina, including lots of them that you're probably well aware of. I think I got to know Ms. Brown Crouch first through speaking at the Special Purpose District Conference, which I've spoken at each year for probably the last five or six years. So this is something we do a lot of, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to help you with this upcoming general obligation issue and hopefully with the future bond issues after that. I'm gonna turn it over to Lawrence and let him speak a little bit to some of our specific experience that we've got with SPDs on the geo front and then also on the revenue bond front as well. Lawrence?
Thanks, C.D. All right, so guys, I'm Lawrence Flynn. I think C.D. did a good job kind of generally introducing us, and we don't want to belabor the point, you know, it's cold and everyone wants to hopefully get in at a decent time. I will say, my Uncle George was on this commission for a really, really long time, so I do want to remember.
What was George's last name?
George Flynn. So he was, he was my great uncle, I guess. He taught me how to fish over my pretty much father in the Alamo. So I have long memories in that he was a great man. So as far as our practice, many, many moons ago, we've now been open as a law firm for 12 years. So we started off with one of the larger law firms, and me and another partner at the time broke off form this practice basically for the sole purpose of doing the representation of local government in South Carolina. We felt it was kind of an underutilized area of the law, and basically the straw that broke the camel's back was a client in the upstate that got sued by a litigator in the Greenville office of our law firm, and basically the firm made a business decision that made more sense to go with the construction contractor client as opposed to the local government client the firm had had for 30 years. And that was an absolute non-starter for us. And so we started our practice, and y'all made the comment that there's lots of lawyers in the room. I tell people all the time, I'm not a real lawyer. I don't sue people. I don't even have a foul lawsuit for what it's worth. But what we do do is we represent local government and we do bond work. And that's where our bread has been buttered for a really long time. We do difficult contracts, and we kind of pride ourselves on knowing the ins and outs of local government. And so in the last 12 years that our firm has been open and operating, we've continued to build on that. I think we do have as much experience as anyone in the state in doing this type of work. And I would venture to say that in a special purpose district context, we are probably the prominent firm in the state for representing special purpose districts. As y'all know, you sometimes are the redheaded stepchild of local government. You have kind of fallen out of the home rule authorizations of the counties and even the municipalities that have historically operated in the state, and you're still operating under this set of enabling authorization that existed when you were created, you know, typically in the 40s, 50s, and 60s. And then when home rule came into effect in '73, you no longer had this authorization to continue to update, amend, and adapt as things changed. So you've basically been this kind of stuck status organization for the last 50 years, and understanding the nuances of how that affects you as an operating entity become really important. And you need lawyers that understand those nuances. And so the one thing that we do deal with a lot, and we're talking about a general obligation bond, you know, as a special purpose district, you have the ability to make decisions with respect to the rates that you charge your utility customers on the wastewater side. You have the ability to set budgets. You have the ability to basically do everything that it takes to operate and maintain this organization that is the James Island Public Service District. The one thing you don't have and the one degree of oversight that was given in home rule to the counties, because the idea behind home rule really was an extension of power formally from the counties who didn't have these powers to provide policing and fire and all of these other things that they've now come to appreciate. Utility service, that's the reason special purpose districts were created. Now that authorization is there, they, the legislature has basically seen fit that you can't create any new special purpose districts. But what you can do is create special authorization and special purpose authorization through the counties. And they ceded the ability for the issuance of general obligation bonds and the expansion and contraction of the boundaries of the special purpose district to the county council. And so for purposes of getting your general obligation debt approved, you do still have to go through the county council for that authorization. We've actually had some conversations through the years with legislators to say, this is probably something that needs to be changed. If, you know, it's hard to designate taxing authority through an appointed body, but when you're an elected body, the idea of being accountable to the taxpayers and being able to levy your own taxes seems as though that would be a logical step to allow you to approve your own general obligation debt. That doesn't exist right now. That probably, you know, if anyone is looking for a battle to fight, that's one to go fight for special purpose districts, because I think you could actually pass general legislation that would give you that authorization. But generally speaking, the process for issuing general obligation debt is gonna require this board to create a petition, petition to county council, who would have to approve that by three readings in a public hearing. They can condition it on a referendum, and the good news is, is that the Charleston County Council is much easier to work with from an approval standpoint than some of your contemporaries, especially the upstate. In Sparkler County and in Greenville County, for example, it is a standing prerequisite that county council will not approve a general obligation bond without going back for a full referendum vote. So any geo that comes in front of them, they kick back for an approval. It's basically their way of punting on making an executive decision on taxing. You don't have that issue. So when we did the St. John's Fire District, we've got template documents to be able to move that process through and have good contacts with the folks at Charleston County to hopefully get the process moving there quickly.
And Charleston does have some specific...
That's correct.
...rules, regulations that are different from any other county in the state. Lots of counties do. And just through our work with St. John's and some other SPDs in Charleston County, we're familiar with those and can guide you through that process.
So generally speaking, that would be the process. You go, you submit your petition, three readings in a public hearing through county council. At that point, the debt is then authorized, at least for statutory purposes. It would then come back to this board for final approval as to the actual issuance of the debt, the terms, the amount, the interest rates, what have you, the type and structure of the debt. When you're talking about general obligation bonds, it's obviously going to be subject to your 8% debt limit. So for those of you that are not familiar with that, there's a constitutional cap as to how much money you can borrow by way of general obligation debt at any one time. And the threshold for that is, is that you take all the properties in your community. And so, you know, I think I've told people this a lot, if you were to think through the process of how you implement taxes in South Carolina, you couldn't have come up with a crazier way to do it if you, you know, just... People must have been drinking when they were talking about it, because we have, this process is relatively unique. You basically take the market value. So what I tell people all the time is, let's assume that, C.D. and I live down the street from one another, and he lives in James Island full-time, and I'm here as my second home, my vacation home. His house is worth $100,000 on, from a market value standpoint, and my house is worth $100,000 from a market standpoint. Well, because his house is a primary residence, he's assessed for tax purposes at 4%. That's that special 4% assessment ratio. Because it's my second home, it's assessed at 6%. So it's that 6% of the special purchase ratio. So same exact house, you know, it could be the exact same cookie cutter house. They're both worth $100,000. If someone wants to, if James comes to buy it from me, it's worth $100,000. To buy it from C.D., it's worth $100,000. But for tax purposes, my house is worth $6,000, because $100,000 times 6% is $6,000. $100,000 on his house times 4% is $4,000. So the exact same house, my tax value is $6,000, his tax value is $4,000. Then you apply the millage to that. Millage is a French term for a thousand, meaning one one-thousandth. So when you start thinking through the tax values and just wondering how it affects your taxpayers, one one-thousandth of my tax value in a $100,000 home, one one-thousandth of the $6,000 value is worth $6. So if you levy a single mill against me and my property in a $100,000 home at a 6% assessment ratio, that one mill costs me $6. That same one mill will only cost C.D. $4. Kind of a crazy way of otherwise doing that. And then incrementally, as your house becomes more valuable, if it was a $200,000 house, that same one mill would be $12,000 against C.D. That's an important consideration when you start thinking through issuing geo debt, because you are planning, you know, you are making an unequivocal covenant that you are going to levy taxes. You may be able to apply other funds to support the payment of that debt, but ultimately the backstop is the levy of added land property taxes. So understanding how that tax burden works is an important consideration for knowing how much you're willing to put on. But in making that determination to determine how much you can borrow by way of general obligation debt, you take my house and C.D.'s house and everyone in here that has a house and everyone that has a car, and you aggregate up all of those $6,000, $4,000, you know, dollar values, and you come up with an aggregate assessed value. And for constitutional debt purposes, the Constitution states that you can borrow up to 8% of the assessed value of the property in your community as your constitutional debt limit. So rough numbers, the best way I always use, I like to say, is if you had a constitutional debt limit, and you took all of the properties in the James Island Public Service District and added them all up, and they were worth $100 million for assessed, that's not market value, that's assessed value, so that's probably a billion dollars worth of market value. Hundred million dollars of assessed value, 8% of that number is your debt limit. So that would be $100 million, 8% of that would be $8 million. So you could borrow up to $8 million at any one time without having to go to the public and ask for a referendum. I don't, we haven't validated the number yet, because obviously we have not been engaged. James, do you have an idea as to what the debt limit of the district is? Well, so as a very first step, the thing that we will need to do is to get a certification from the county auditor's office as to the valuation of the assessed value here in the community. Do you have a rough idea as to what the value of a single mill is? We can usually back into the number based on that. Anyone have a...
We'd like to put, we'd use $110,000.
So actually, that's a pretty good rough estimate then. So, you know, if one mill on my property is $6, one mill against the entire community, basically back it out, is probably about $100 million. I assume you have about $8 or $9 million worth of debt limit based on the value of the mill. So knowing what you can do, knowing what your project is otherwise going to entail, you could borrow up to, we'll say, $8 million without having to go through a full one referendum process. We will have that certified, and we will make sure that that information is in our hands before we go and make that formal request to county council, because we need to be able to know that it is indeed a valid authorization, because if they ask, hey, can we bypass our debt limit, or are we bypassing our debt limit, the answer, we wouldn't be able to say no. And then we can obviously work through whatever the number is. So that's generally the process for how we determine what you can borrow, how you can borrow, and then how long you want to borrow. And so obviously, if you've identified some target on the underlying millage that you're willing to levy against the taxpayers to be able to service the bonds that we're talking about, we can reverse engineer or kind of backfill the term of the borrowing based on what you're comfortable with from a tax standpoint. So there's lots of flexibility that we can kind of build into the discussion. We'll take that lead from staff. That's obviously a council budget decision. You know, working with your financial advisor and making sure that y'all are fundamentally aware of the process and, you know, it's kind of built into your budget process. So any questions on the idea of general obligation debt generally?
Oh, I have.
Because I talk really fast sometimes.
I know, you talk slow down.
Yes, I can definitely slow down.
I like what I'm hearing, you know, explaining to us exactly what you're doing. So that's a good sign. So maybe I might like you guys, so just keep up, because I like to know exactly what's going on. And I think, you know, explaining and telling us gives us a lot of information.
Well, we can inundate you with information if you want.
Not too much, but, you know, give it to us.
But that is our goal. At the end of the day, y'all are accountable to your taxpayers for the decisions that you ultimately make. When you make a decision, I think you need to understand the decision that you're making and how that does affect your taxpayers, the assets that you're otherwise trying to finance. And there's real value in understanding where those tax dollars go, the assets that you're otherwise building, and the return that they're getting on the money that you're otherwise borrowing for, you know, the long-term needs of the system.
Lawrence and I both had the experience of speaking to commissions and councils and, you know, presenting to them ordinances or resolutions for them to borrow millions of dollars and getting blank stares in return and, you know, getting an approval in 15 seconds. I think, speaking personally, I would much rather have questions and make sure that you know exactly what it is you're doing, rather than just kind of dropping a stack of documents on your desk and asking you to sign up on them.
And again, we're also not asking you to have to read through all of that and be, you know, comfortable with every single word in it. You bring on your professionals to be able to make sure. But you need to understand the absolute basis of the deal to be able to make that decision. That's okay.
Considering the fact that next year is gonna be a reassessment year, what kind of problems is that gonna cause commission here as far as the bond?
So that's a really good question. So every five years by state law, the county is required to come in and revalue all the properties in the community. And so the idea is, as your community continues to grow and new tax assets hit the books, you know, you can drive down the road here and see that there are new commercial businesses coming up, you have new residential developments coming up everywhere, those values are getting picked up on a regular basis and need to come back and revalue them. The same idea...
That's gonna be in the city, though, not in the PST for the most part.
Well, but there's still, the county will do an across-the-board reallocation of tax values, because the attendance spent, so the benefit of that growth is, is that you may be in your house, and you may have been there for 10 years, and you may have bought your house for that $100,000 number, but, you know, because of all the new development that's going on around you, the value of your property is probably now $100,000 or $200,000, just because that's the market that y'all are in. Now, there's a consideration of that under Act 388, where if I were to come into your neighborhood and buy your house for $200,000, I get reassessed at $200,000. But if you've been there historically, you're capped to, your reassessment can only go up 15% every five years. So that's actually a really beneficial thing if you've been there for a long time. But the reassessment is an important consideration, because what you're trying to do is basically reset or retrofit the value of a mill. What you're, you don't want to continue to pick up that, the legislature basically said, if you're in an area that has large growth and lots of population and things are happening and it's going gangbusters, you have to basically go back and reset the millage to basically zero out the benefit of all the growth that you have in your community. So, for example, if the value of a mill is $110,000 and all that growth otherwise comes in, and incrementally it's creeped up to $120,000 over the last five years, they're gonna keep you at a level where that's, where the same level of taxes is going to continue to...
Rollback.
The rollback is gonna roll, is gonna, will be rolled back so that you will continue to keep the same amount of collections, but it's gonna reduce the tax burden on the taxpayers.
Let's try not to squeeze out the people that have been there.
That's...
You can't help the...
That's ultimately the hope.
Millage should actually go down based on reassessment. That's happened a lot.
So if it's $110, we might be looking at $105.
Well, hopefully it would be, as opposed to $110, you'd be $120. So if you put on, if it took you 100 mills to raise $1 million, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, if it took you 100 mills to raise $100, and millage went up to $110, $110,000, now it's only gonna take 90 mills. And so that's the rollback that you're allowed to receive. So you're not actually pledging the millage as security for the debt, you're just pledging the tax dollar generally. And that's what makes the issuance of debt secure by taxes a little bit of an inexact science, because, you know, I could buy a new car tomorrow and, you know, or my car could, you know, I could be driving a 10-year-old car today and buy a new car tomorrow, or buy, you know, buy an old house and fix it up. And so those tax values are not static, they're changing all the time. And I could go in and challenge it, just like, you know, a Boeing could go in and challenge their assessment in Charleston County. And as a result of that, that can sometimes make those values bump around a little bit. So we solve to as close a target as we can, but we typically will make some assumptions that, you know, inflation is gonna grow at this rate, and so we'll build that into the debt service debt. And we'll make some assumptions that tax collections are gonna be not at 100%, but at 95%. And based on kind of those rough estimates, the goal is, is to sustain that tax levy at a level where you've told your taxpayers, hey, we're going to put it on, the millage on this number, we're gonna keep it, but you gotta have, there's a little bit of a given test there. And so, you know, what we've told people in times past is, sometimes it's not, you don't want to solve for a flat amortization or the principal and interest payments on your bonds to be the same number for, you know, 20, 30, 40 years, whatever the numbers ultimately are, because the value of your taxes today are, the way this area is growing, going to be much less than it would be 10 years from now. And if you have the same annual principal and interest payment today that you have 10 years from now, and you say, hey, we're only gonna put on five mills to pay that number, well, five mills may pay for it today, but it may only take three and a half mills 10 years from now. And so you get that, which is good for your taxpayers, but you start creeping down and there's no consistency to the numbers. That's, you know, that's when you decide, hey, from our capital, and this is a capital planning discussion that probably needs to be done with staff. As you start thinking through, you know, do shorter-term borrowings where you say, okay, we capture the value of a mill for this period of time, and we do another borrowing five years from now. Or you set your debt service so that it falls off and you do another borrowing, so that you keep that millage as consistent as possible. Because what you're trying to avoid is big spikes in the tax levy for your client. Because what we tell clients all the time, and one of the best things we can do for our clients that do have strong capital planning, is when they say, we know we have a $100 million capital plan, and we have the ability to borrow $5 million or $6 million every two years. Well, you can do a lot of damage with knocking out big projects that way, or if you incrementally set your debt service or your borrowing structure so that every time one of those bonds falls off, you put another one on, you can tell your taxpayers, we haven't raised your taxes. What we've done is we've sustained our ability to continue to do capital improvements and capital projects without having that tax wash away. The worst thing that can happen, if you've had a debt, you know, had a long-term bond in place, it matures and they say, yeah, we probably should do something. Well, the taxpayers get the credit, the benefit of those taxes going off the tax rolls in the year that the debt goes away, and if you don't immediately have a new debt coming on, you're then going to have to raise their taxes back up in the year after the taxes have dealt. And so there's some real strategy from a long-term planning standpoint, where your plans, from a budget standpoint, I know you budget on a year-over-year basis, that your capital planning horizon should really be on a five, 10, 15-year horizon, because it really needs to marry up around your plans for your borrowing. And that goes for not only your geo bonds, but any of your long-term borrowing on the utility funds as well. I know you have a lot of SRF debt outstanding, and those are generally solved, and the utility side is a little easier to plan for, because you get to dictate and control your rates independently. The tax side is different, because you don't have control over how those evaluations are made. You generally know what your values are, you generally can solve to a tax target you're trying to accomplish, but the numbers move a little bit, and so planning for that becomes really important.
Well, in theory, you would have to be doing maximum improvements all the time, right? That means, so it's kind of like a square dance, as soon as the one thing gets paid off or something else right there to kind of take its place?
I, that's, but again, that's part of your kind of long-term capital planning obligations. If you say, look, you know, we looked around the system and we have no needs, I doubt that that's probably the case, but it's a matter of planning for it. Where you say, you know, we need, we need a new fire truck, and we need that fire truck to come on, you know, because fire trucks are really expensive now. You know, you need a new ladder truck, you need a pumper truck. Those are depreciable assets that only have a definitive, you know, period of time. Another piece of that is, is that you do have this debt limit available to you. I noticed that y'all have done a lot of capital leasing. Well, capital leases don't count against your debt limit for general obligation bond purposes, but they are an appropriation from your general fund. And so if you start getting tight on the tax levy that you have on the general fund side, the geo bonds are, you can levy without limit estimate or amount. So you can actually move some of that amount around based on the targets that you're otherwise trying to accomplish. That's also a way that you can build that into your capital planning, where you know that those trucks have to be replaced every two years or every three years. And so, you know, some of my clients...
We have...
Some of our clients that are utility districts, so they say they have metering trucks. Well, you know those metering trucks get just beat to death because someone's out there every single day opening that door. Well, you know, it may be a five, it may be a truck that has a five-year useful life, but when you have someone getting in and out of the truck every single day and slamming that door, it really only has a 48, you know, 48-month life or 36-month life. And so if you know that, you can plan for that, you could layer that into your plan for geo bonds and get out of the capital leasing cycle. Probably not as efficient. Geo bond is the most secure form of borrowing in the state of South Carolina, maybe in the country, because it's not a mortgage on a particular asset, it's a pledge, it's a mortgage on every piece of taxable property of your community, because every person in this room is going to pay taxes to be able to repay that debt. And so if you don't, what's the recourse? You fall into the length of tax proceedings and they sell your house on the boardhouse steps, and you are but one small player in all of the taxpayers that are obligated paying for that obligation.
I mean, it's also the cheapest debt, generally speaking, that you can borrow.
And, and the banks understand that because they, they recognize that their risk of potentially not being paid are very minimal. Now, against that, you know, it's, it's easy to say that in a place like the island where you see, you know, just this explosive growth. But the, the example I give people all the time is think about a place like Detroit. In nineteen seventy-five, Detroit had two million people. Well, today Detroit has six hundred thousand people. Well, when you've had, you know, one point five million people leave your community, that means that you have, you know, lost all of those vehicles and all of those boats and all of those, those, those residential properties that used to be well-kept are now no more well-kept. So if you had four-year debt that was issued in nineteen seventy-five, you had two million people paying it, well, if it's still outstanding today, you've got six hundred thousand people. So it's the reverse of what you have, where that tax levy then has to go up to be able to continue to support paying those obligations as, as that creep happens. But that's, you have, the, the good news is you have the reverse of, of that as a problem. You have growth coming and everyone recognizes growth coming in South Carolina is a blessing and a curse. But dealing with that growth and figuring out it smartly is, is something that everyone addresses. But I know that's a lot of information to kind of throw at the table at one time.
We need information, information, information.
Well, and I will say that. So we, we've done, you know, C D and I represent lots of special purpose district, we represent lots of cities and we represent lots of counties. And, you know, anytime we come into a new relationship, we're kind of feeling y'all out just like y'all are feeling us out. And we want there to be a level of comfort where if you ask us a question, we're gonna give you the honest answer. We're gonna make sure that you understand where we're coming from and we're all on the same page as we move there. And in understanding that, we do board retreats, we sit down and we will have work sessions on any of this information that y'all otherwise have. Our goal here is to make sure you have all the information you need to make an decision. But we also don't want to make sure, you know, we're not just, we don't want to just meet for the heck of a meeting. If y'all feel like comfortable with it, we don't, we don't want to belabor it. You know, we want to make sure that y'all feel comfortable. And some, and some of our folks will say, we've done this enough, we feel comfortable with it, you know, move on. But while we start a new relationship, I think the goal is making sure y'all feel as comfortable with us as we can be.
Can you give somehow in the computer, give us an executive summary of what you've told us and either ship it to Mr. Gaines or Chief Sebo?
Sure.
And that way we have like, I'm quote nine ads here, a hard copy so we can look at?
Absolutely. So, so we've done, you know, we kind of had, the, the, the best place to find information about us, I think everyone knows this one now, is our website. C D actually is our defective firm IT person. He designed the website, so for better or for worse, I think it actually looks really good. But it's got good summaries. So it's www.popeflint.com. And it has bios of all the lawyers in our office, it has descriptions of all the projects that we've otherwise undertaken. From, you know, we are disclosure counsel to the courts authority on the five hundred million dollar deal they disclosed. And I'm doing a tiny issue for the Woodford Water District, or Woodford Water District, and I'm going up to close tomorrow for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So it, it runs the gamut, you know, we are, we are, you know, all of our clients are as important as, as every other one. We want to make sure we answer those phone calls that we're returning emails. When someone has a question, our goal is to be as interactive and interfacing as we otherwise can. And that's the reason C D and I are both here tonight is because, you know, I'm, there are, there are times when I have meetings, you know, because like I said, we don't go to court, but we, this, this is our courtroom. This is, this is what we get to come to.
Oh, we'll thank you.
But, but it's, but it's, you know, so, so we want you to see the, the basis, because that's the way we operate. Is that, you know, it may not be me doing your work all the time, it may be C D and maybe one of our other partners. And it's because we work fairly seamlessly and we want that interaction because, you know, thi- this is a, this is a cooperative practice. We can't do public times work without security lawyers and we can't do it without our tax lawyer, we can't do it without our state law expertise folks. And so all of those kind of come into bear. And, and, you know, you may see different folks, but I think C D and I will be your, your point people for any of these other ones.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Let us know if you can do anything.
Yep.
Look forward to it.
Lawrence, remind me of some, Pat, your brother?
I'm uncle.
Uncle.
My dad is the oldest of eight, he's a good, strong Irish guy.
Yes.
Yes, well, thank you. I want to, I mean, this transition, trying to choose them worth carefully because I certainly do not want the gentleman with the hair, I'm not sure if you're at all uncomfortable. I won't emphasize that I am optimistic with this relationship that the teams on PSD will have, that that term will be positive and productive. And if I held these comments until next meeting, they'd be necronistic, so just let me save them now in a whole piece for about. But I am uncomfortable with the process. At first, any point I had, maybe I missed something in communications or the past months. But first thing I had, the things are not working out with the previous bond attorney was in an email that Mr. Gaines, that Chief Sebo, and I guess there's a copy to this, you know, sort of stir. I, I had no idea that it was not working out. It seems to me that the selection of bond attorney is a matter of policy and that I think that we should have some input in it. Over the past couple of years, some of this have been very vocal about how prerogatives, as I like to know, was being usurped by staff. And this is no negative reflection on staff. It, it happens, I think, in, in every entity, every country. Staffs will feel the void when the elected officials give them the opportunity. Maybe sensing that, well, staff just don't want to be, I mean, the elected officials don't want to be bothered. You know something about the czar who was in Russia, that he, he just didn't know how he could deal with all those clerks in his staff. Over the years, I've seen the commission advocate a lot of this prerogative. Maybe it's good, maybe it's not. Let's see, continuing. I'm only gonna be with you for another year, so I want you to save us down. Deal with issues like that. Thank you.
Our next item is the motion to adopt the ordinance twenty sixteen dash zero zero four, Commission rules and procedures, first reading. Everyone was provided with copies of the original document, very well spelled out with any deletions or additions, and then a final copy. There were a couple of little areas that did warrant some comment or had questions by them. Would anybody like to address those?
I think we need to make a motion first and then discuss it.
Well, then.
Then I make a motion, we.
I second it.
Make a motion, you're making a motion to adopt?
Yeah, adopt the ordinance. I mean, I second it, so now we can discuss it. We'll get voted on. No, wait.
Not a discussion before vote.
Yeah, discussion, okay.
I did have a problem with election of commission officers in December. We don't swear on, if the next election, we get new people in, next November, they don't get sworn in probably till January. So we should hold off electing new officers till January.
We appreciate.
Thank you.
Unless we swear people in earlier.
Which section was that?
Rule nine.
Rule nine.
I, I just think we just need to change order and change December to January, it would be okay.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
Does that make sense to everybody here?
Yeah.
People, that, that's the way we had set it up back in January was that the elections were supposed to be in the first meeting in January and the new officers would take over at that time.
Yeah. Yes. Where's this rising standard?
So change the last to first, basically. You're gonna change the language that says election for officers of the commission shall be by open public ballot instead of saying that the last regular meeting of the calendar year at first regular meeting.
Yes, yes.
I would like to suggest along with rule nine, rather than the first regular meeting, that the commission consider having a delineated special meeting for the first week of January so the commission can be sworn in as well as the new, if there are any new commissioners elected. That way we're not waiting until the end of the month of January. You're, you're elected in November, you take office in January. To me, it makes sense to have a special meeting to swear in commissioners, including new commissioners. And then you could make the, the selection.
And I think we did that when we had two meetings a month, but since we've gone to one, but we can always have a special meeting, like we said, that would be fine with me.
I think, you see, well, the connection is, is a bit impossible, but another option, not necessarily gonna put in an option. I think to word the rule of procedure that new officers shall be elected at the first meeting following the swearing-in.
Yes, sir.
Going back to what we just did, valid at the first, if we just take out the word regular, which says first meeting of it, that would allow us to establish the special meetings early in the, in the month. So that would take care of both of the issues that we just brought up. That would mean that we could do our regular meeting at the end of the month. So it would still be a January swearing-in of officers if we did that, but by taking the word regular out, we could have new officers right then. Swearing in and the, the special meeting, but just call it.
I think it's fine. I think you want to put the word, if you're gonna take regular meeting out, put the word commission in there, first commission meeting. That way it's not considered as a committee.
Perfect. I've got a lot of other questions, just kind of to add.
You know, I went, I read that more than once and I think you did a really good job. And so I'd like to just move on and on something else to do.
And you said you had another question?
I've, I've got questions on several of the rules.
Okay, that's what we're here for.
Okay. First, on the very first thing, when we do our first and second reading, we're, we do it, we're doing it as twenty sixteen dash oh oh four. That would take care of the first and second readings for what we're trying to correct so far this year, right?
Well, this would be the first reading of this, so you can be at twenty nineteen instead of twenty sixteen.
It can be twenty nineteen. I, I would love to see this show up at twenty nineteen something.
Yeah, because at first, when I read it, I thought it was a title, but I mean, I would think it would be reflective of the year in which you're making the.
Yeah, I think it's up at, yeah, twenty nineteen, up at the top.
All right, so it's on this, but it's not on our.
Yeah, I even had it highlighted over here.
Yeah, it's on the. Yeah, it's twenty nineteen.
Okay, all the.
Can we change this to?
Still going.
Gotcha.
Adopt the ordinance twenty nineteen and leave the numbering off for Tamara to do what needs to be done?
Yeah, because we don't have it numbered yet.
And Tamara, you, you know what they're saying, right? Okay, good.
So.
Yeah.
So we're changing this, moving the ordinance twenty nineteen, commission rules and procedures, first reading, okay. Rule five. Oh, wait, before we do that, on rule one, can we put in there a question about is there a preference for Robert's Rules of Order? The previous commission is the one who voted to change from Robert's Rules of Order to American Institute of Department of Attorney.
Absolutely not, I don't.
Well, the preference for Robert's rules is because it's universally accepted.
No, no, I'm just saying.
So that's, that's.
Yeah, that's the question is.
Right, so I would say yes.
So that's where A I P came into it.
No, we never, I don't know.
What's the other?
The Robert's Rules of Order. And I think, you know, the reason we put that question in there is because the two thousand sixteen version that we were first given had the A I P in it. And then Ms. Clifford had a change to Robert's Rules of Order, which, you know, I don't know enough about the part, the A I P to compare the two. So to say one's better than the other, it, it's a matter of preference for y'all. If it's universal and a lot of other public service districts and municipalities use it.
Did vote that in.
All right, thank you, I don't like that.
I would, I would go with.
Okay, well then, the past is there. Okay, so there we go. We got that.
A I P to Robert's Rules.
We're gonna have Robert's Rules.
That's correct.
Okay, so we can get back to normal soon because we've been, look, with that, I've been, has made me crazy.
Commissioner Wasson has the floor.
On rule three, I like the way it was changed up, but I do have a question. Does that mean?
It says six P M., but it should be probably seven because there it is there, seven, perfect.
No, it says seven.
Yes, it says.
Unless agreed by otherwise, I'm already dirty, yep.
But if we do that, does that mean that we're supposed to announce tonight or Monday coming up at our regular meeting? That our December meeting date is changed? We need to make sure that it's a public announcement on that? Okay. Rule four, since we're doing that on rule three and we're changing it, instead of postponement, can we put in change or cancellation of regular meeting? Instead of postponement, that way we can, if not postponing.
Move it up.
Little bit, either way. Would that, would that work?
Yeah, because change would encompass postponement. I mean, that's just an option up here.
Either way, right. Rule five, special meeting, I have a, I guess it's a dyslexic question here. The sentence says, any officer, let me find it. Any officer, whenever they're, in, in their opinion, the public business may require it, provided a majority, the commission agrees. Does that mean that any of the three officers cannot call a meeting unless they get the approval of the commission? A special meeting may be called by any officer, whenever in their opinion, a public business may require it, provided a majority, the commission agrees. So if the commission doesn't agree, that means that the officer cannot call the meeting?
The way it's written, that's right.
I have a problem putting that provided a majority, the commission agrees in there.
At the majority, right?
So you like the old writing with it, with whenever in their opinion, the public business may require it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm putting a period, not putting that extension in there. Especially because it's an emergency where it has to be called and everybody can't attend.
Well, and that brings up something I wanted to ask him about too, but we'll stay on this right now.
I don't think it's right to call seven, well, that the majority, the commission has to agree to have a meeting if an officer is calling the meeting.
So majority, y'all was when?
That's just four, at least four people, right?
Majority, it's more than, so if the majority says no, no is no, I mean, how do you?
So you're, you're worried that a public concern is gonna be misaddressed or not addressed if, if these, if the majority does not deem that it's something to be important, is that?
Well, it's a combination of a couple things. Number one, if, if the, if an officer thinks that it's necessary. I, I, this is one of these questions, you know, does it need to be a majority or does it, does it need to be an officer calling for the meeting?
Well, the glory of it all is that we can implement this and should we require, encounter a problem along the way, we can change it. That's why laws are ready to be changed.
Here's the rest of it, the next sentence that you put in there, a special meeting may be called, requested by any commissioner by written request addressed to any officer of the commission. So an officer can't call a meeting of the commission, but a commissioner can.
It says may, not will, may is a
I don't think that's the way that, that reads, if it's a non-officer that's requesting the meeting, they have to bring that request to the officer. Then the officer is still going to have to put it out there, and the majority would have to say, yes, we're going to be on this. I think the reason
Can we rephrase that somehow, rather?
Probably. The, the reason the provided a majority of the commission agrees, the reason I believe that it was put in there, and I don't remember who put it in there, is to keep from having
One person telling you what to do.
Yeah, one, yeah, somebody controlling and dictating how many meetings there are going to be, and having a meeting, you know, every week of the month, because somebody thinks it's important to talk about something. As opposed to the majority saying, yeah, this is a concern that we need to address. So it's kind of a, it's a control mechanism to have that majority vote provision in there, I think.
I appreciate that, because we had about thirty meetings this year, and I don't want no more meetings.
I also, I'd like to say, in regards to that, and also sometimes the timing, you know, because there were some meetings that we had, and several of us were unavailable, but the meeting was still held. And some people had to not go to work, you know, miss appointments, things like that, so that's why I believe this is imperative to that.
Madam Chairman, I feel like if it's something important to me, some issue, I should be able to figure out go to, all I have to do is find three other commissioners who agree with me and say, yep, we're going to do that. So you only have to talk three people into doing it. And if you can talk them in and say, this is important, we got to do it, I think it'll work. And I see what he's saying about just people calling meetings all the time.
I mean, you could have the chair call a meeting one week, and then the vice chair say, well, I want to talk about this, and call a meeting, and then the secretary, and the same thing. This, this way, the majority has to say, yes, this is worth us getting together.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and like I said, we want to start twenty twenty on a clean sheet. I don't want to come to thirty meetings.
And sorry about the notice the commissioners by the method, that will also cut down on mailings, because some like mail, some like email, some might just come up here and pick it up. And, you know, I don't need it mailed to me every day, I mean, I can access it from my computer, so at least every little penny counts, so let's, you know, that's a great way to save some money there, too.
May I add something, Madam Chair? I would like to thank y'all that have worked on this since January for these changes to the rules of procedure, because there's been a lot of work on y'all, and I really appreciate all that's been involved in it.
So other than that, I definitely see the point there, so I don't think that needs changing personally, but if anybody else believes in it.
Skipping on. Rule seven, agenda. Again, I guess I'm a little bit confused, because over, over this last year, we've had the position being district manager, we've had the position being district administrator, and we've had the position just administrator. Can somebody please clarify for me what we actually have?
You mean in terms of just shared terminology?
Yeah, because this tithing bounced back and forth on two or three different occasions.
I, I think Chairman, I mean Commissioner Walken, I believe that it is administrator throughout this document that is being proposed. I think, I think it's a consistent term as administrator, so, but whatever y'all want to call it, district manager, administrator, whatever you want to call it, as long as it's consistent through the document, that's fine.
That's fine with me, I just would like to know which one we're playing.
Administrator.
Okay. So
It's just a matter, it's just, as long as it's proper, I don't care, administrator, it's good. Or district manager, I always liked district manager, for twenty years, I was saying district manager. I like district manager, sounds better.
It's easier to say, administrator is such a difficult word to get off your tongue.
Let's just say district manager, let's call it that.
This was an opportunity, Dan.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Lisa's
I'd like to recognize Lisa's comment. When we posted the ad for administrator, I had quite a few calls, people thought it was an administrative job. They, and as soon as I told them it was like the C D O.
Okay.
And district manager is widely used throughout the state.
Yeah.
District manager, then, sure, it goes with that.
Since I've been here for twenty years, and I've been here the longest, I less call him district manager and just cut all that other stuff out.
By who?
You are now the district manager, I like that.
Chief Sebo, would you be okay with that? My thing, this was a buzzword year, was for the federal government, I mean, we became a campus, we're not a campus, we're an office complex. And we went from district manager to district administrator. I personally like district manager, I think Chief Sebo could have a little say in it.
Just call him Chris, huh?
District manager, does that?
Well, I mean, in just a moment, yes, now you do.
Okay. Still staying on rule seven. It looks, or the way it reads to me, when you look at what we just decided on rule five about the meetings, we have taken the district manager out of the, on rule five, we've taken the district manager out of the decision-making process as to what's on the agenda.
You're going back to rule five, you said we're staying on seven, so, all right, hold on.
Well, it's five and seven together on this part of it, the district manager is not part of having the meetings, but he is part of the agenda, is that the way this is supposed to read?
That makes sense.
And then the next part of it says, with the advice and consent of the officers of the commission, that means that all three of the officers have to approve the agenda? Or just a majority of the officers have to approve the agenda?
Where are you reading?
All right, rule seven, the agenda for the regular, special, and committee, and committee meetings shall be prepared by the district manager with the advice and consent of the officers of the commission. So we're having the officers decide what's on the committee meetings.
The officers are conversing with the district managers, so no collusion takes place between the, just the chair and the district administrator, or district manager, whatever you want to call it.
Well, I mean, the officers are deciding what's on the committee meetings?
Whoever the chair of that person, of that committee would be, because that's a whole different ballgame.
Well, it says here, the agenda for regular, special, and committee meetings shall be prepared by the district manager with the advice and consent of the officers of the commission. So
And or the chair of the committee, I mean, if you want to make it that way, I mean, that way it'll address both issues?
Take committee meetings out of it.
Why?
No?
Well, the committee meetings, we're trying to do a shift here, where all the legwork, just like what we're doing right now, should be happening at the administrative committee meeting.
I agree, I agree.
So by doing that, that's why we need that
But do the officers, do the officers of the commission
Not for the committee.
Need to decide what's on the agenda for the committee?
I would not think so, because your committee is going to know more what they say.
Then the committee meeting, committee needs to come out of
Someone just made a suggestion to address that, she said, or the chair of the committee, here it is.
I may, I was going to state the same, it's just perhaps, yes, adding one word much as that. I think that will very much take care of that, any, any misunderstanding.
Please let me finish, please.
Sorry.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I think she corrected it.
What did we did?
I think she said with the advice and consent of the officers of the commission or chair of the committee.
Yep.
Or committee chair.
Okay. We did change to rule nine that I was going to question. Rule ten. The chair may vote on all questions with the exception at it as ex officio, and may only vote in the event of a tie. The only time the chair can only vote on all, the chair can vote on all questions, but can only vote in the event of a tie?
Then that would mean that the chair would end up voting last. There's seven of all, there's six of us, and then there would be a chair, right?
But, but we, but you say the chair can vote on all questions, but can only vote in the event of a tie?
And let me, can I? During the, we had committee meetings, and in the past
So this is addressing committee meetings, not really the
Right. Committee meeting is when the chair
Three to four, okay, so there needs to be just a clarification
Right.
Between that, so that's what that
Let me think, committee meetings, we had three people, and the only time, at one time, the only time that the chairman could vote was when there was a tie. But in the past
The committee chair.
No, the, the chairman of the because what's when happened, the ex officio could only vote when there was a tie. But in the last couple of years, the, the chair has been voting on everything, and we got nothing done, it's been a dead everything that we voted on ended up dead because there was a tie. You understand? Because the, the chair was, who was supposed to only act when there was a tie, was voting, and we never got nothing done. So
Are we talking chair of the commission, or are we talking chair of the committee?
Chair of the whole commission, the ex officio was voting, and it caused everything that we did die because it was a tie. We got nothing done last year.
So Alan, what you're saying is that statement contradicts itself, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, but because there's only three people on the committee, and the chair would be ex officio as a fourth, but the way it says, the chair can only vote in the event of a tie, but there can't be a tie unless the chair votes.
No, that's not true, this is three persons committee, and one member of the committee is absent.
Okay.
All three of us are going to say the same thing.
Yeah, exactly, because that's what happened.
That's what I was going to say as well.
So that's the reason the statement was put in on special committees, rule twenty, it says the same thing.
May I add something quick, because for two months, I changed that committee to four member, and the ex officio was responsible, would be that person. If that's not, if you have a tie vote, then the ex officio would have to come in and vote to break that up.
But that's the administrative committee only, that doesn't affect the rest of
I said that only, it affects that one.
But at, we used to, your mom, the ex officio, used to come in on all, and that just started last year when we got that other book that I, I don't want to talk about, those rules. Everything got so confusing, we didn't know what end was up. So I'm glad we went back to Robert's rules, so we can get some sense into this district.
Amen to that.
Mr. Platt and I, who've been here for twenty years, have been totally confused in the last two years. We bought our medication right now.
Would it make sense, would it make sense to break that sentence up for clarity and say the chair may vote on all questions before the commission? And then as to committees, chair shall serve in an ex officio capacity, and may only vote in the event of a tie?
Sure, that's up, that makes a whole lot sense, you have differentiating.
Okay, that, that statement will also have to be included as part of rule twenty, because that's the one on special committees.
Got it.
So the statement says the ex officio member may only vote in the event of a tie within that one as well.
Okay.
Okay, so that doesn't take into account general and special. Well, it would take into account for special meetings. Just to clarify, in my own mind, rule eleven under parliamentarian. Parliamentarian is an attorney, and we're not going to have the attorney reporting commission, they're going to be reporting to the district manager, is that what we're saying?
Can you please restate that, because you just confused me.
The way the way that it reads now, after we changed it, because it did say the district manager will engage a parliamentarian attorney, and back in January, we changed it to the commission will engage a parliamentarian attorney, so on and on and on. But there's a note here, that Commissioner Clifford had suggested that it goes to the administrator rather than to the full commission. So which way do we want this to be? The parliamentarian reports to us, or the parliamentarian reports to the district manager?
I think if they'd break plenty of sense later, yeah, that stated that the, it would reach out to the administrator, or district manager, pardon me, rather than have to then
And this would be on
I didn't, I didn't, can't deal with that.
That's because she can't talk her
I know, I, I, I'm sorry, I just
She said that she liked it the way that it was going to the district manager. So our administrator
So we're taking and moving it back from what we changed to, to reporting to, where it was before we started.
Well
My, my concern with that would be if, if a parliamentarian attorney is being hired to serve the commission.
It should go to the commission.
It should go to the commission, and it probably
That's fine, there's not be one more person that could screw up the message, if I could translate it correctly.
And it probably should be done through the established policies for biddings and R F P and all that type of stuff.
That's fine. Does this say we have to have one, or does it feel like
If you feel like hiring
If you feel, yeah, you don't need one, I mean
Well, we got one, right over there.
Well, I don't, I don't hold myself out as a parliamentarian, but we can, we can address most of it, yes.
I don't think we need a parliamentarian.
What, yes, Alan?
Actually, that's what I was going to suggest, with our district attorney being as versus they are that we could call on them, and if, if they couldn't answer it, then we could go hire a parliamentarian.
I got you, okay.
Well, you could take, you could take rule eleven out, because rule twelve would allows for you to hire a specialty attorney.
Yeah, let's just set it down.
If the district attorney can't handle
Yeah, and then if it, you know, and if, that's just one type of specialty attorney, so you wouldn't have to even put
Right.
That's cool with me, you want to take eleven out.
Take eleven out.
Take them out, take them out, we got, we got, I don't want to see another parliamentarian standing like
So that would make rule twelve, rule eleven, and then
Yes. In case you weren't
Because I make you happy, I don't We took it out.
Okay, Rule 17, rule to debate.
Now, we're on which one?
Rule 17.
For the purposes of the rest of this discussion, let's just stick to what we've got here, so then that way you don't have to do the adjustment in your head, how's that sound?
Yeah, okay, that's perfect. Rule 17, B, I guess it adds to the Chair. We need to make sure that it matches up with Rule 10 with whatever is being said in it, because that has the duties of the Chair in it, so it's just whatever 10 is saying.
Yeah, I think that one's okay, because you're dealing with... This is related to the actual commission meeting.
Right, but it says in here, "May move, second, vote, and debate from the Chair".
Right.
So we need to, whatever stipulations from Rule 10 we put in there need to be part of whatever's in Rule 17.
I don't think there was any stipulations in 10 that limited the Chairs involved in that commission meeting, just the committee.
Okay. Rule 20, we've already talked about, which is Special Committees.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question, make a suggestion? How many do we have to go through if we go take everyone step by step? Because you've spent a lot of time on this, she's spent a lot of time, he's spent a lot of time, now we're taking one by one to change due from go.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, is that if there were this many questions, I mean, some of these are not really, I mean, it was a matter of terminology. I mean, so what, what, what meat-wise do you see a problem within all these rules?
If we're gonna do this, we need to get it right, so that we're not making changes and changes and changes. It's almost...
Okay.
Well, I mean, I don't disagree, and we wanna be here to do our job completely, but we've had employees that were told this was a 30-minute meeting, and we're now pushing an hour and 30 minutes. I think you have, she has, and Chip has worked a lot on this all year. Well, him not to be, had been in that one, but y'all have. And I think it's, you know, for me, that's some bulk.
My feeling on that is, that's his merit, and what Commissioner Engelman said is, and also I appreciate Commissioner Lawton's opinion, we need to get it right, go into it. On the other hand, yes, if the staff is assured if you want a 30-minute meeting, maybe we could just defer the rest of it.
No, we're gonna keep on going.
Yeah, just finish up.
Not abandon it, just defer it.
No, let's finish. Alan, would you please state your case, so we can go home?
Okay. Rule 21, standing committee.
Okay, am I recognized?
No, I was talking to Mr. Lawton.
Just for a minute. Important.
You gotta go home, go home.
I move for adjournment.
Well, you don't get no second, so let's move on.
Well, we're gonna vote on adjournment. He made motion, I second it for adjournment, and we need to vote on what we've done through, and then vote on adjournment, so. Because we just have to come back, if we don't take it word by word at every Senate, we'll be here till next Christmas.
But I would rather spend the rest of the time, rather than come back to another meeting. So I would ask Mr. Allen, whatever complaint he have, he could put it in writing and send it beforehand.
Rules are made that they can be changed.
A motion to adjourn has to be dealt with, or that's a part of them.
We'll call the...
Move to adjourn.
No. Commissioner Brown Crouch?
No.
Commissioner Clifford?
No.
Commissioner Engelman?
I'm gonna go no.
Commissioner Lawton?
No.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Poston?
Yeah.
Commissioner Woolsey? No.
With that being said, I'd like to call a question. Time for vote.
I second it.
Call the question, time to vote.
Okay.
Call the question to get ordinance, back to the ordinance and the changes that were made so far.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
I'm confused.
We're voting on the ordinance that...
Moving to approve the ordinance as is, and course...
At this point, you're saying what we've done so far.
All right.
We'll deal with the rest of it later.
I think I do need to point a couple things out. When I was going back through writing the full thing today, there was some cleanup that I did, that I sent to Ms. White, but I don't think it got distributed yet, so I think it's probably necessary for me to at least let y'all know what that was.
Okay.
It's just clarification stuff, it doesn't really change anything. If you're gonna approve it as is, I would, because she's got what is the most reasonable. So all that I did was, in Rule 9, I added a sentence that says, "Committee Chair shall be appointed by the Chair of the Commission".
That's correct.
And Rule 10, I just, up at the top, I put, "In the absence of the Chair, then the Vice Chair shall be the presiding officer", and then, "In the Vice Chair's absence, the Secretary, if no presiding officer is present, the senior member of the Commission shall serve as Chair".
Senior meaning longest-serving?
Yes, that's right.
No, I'm going home.
Then, under Rule 15, quorum, same, I just added a sentence, "In the absence of an officer of the Commission, the senior member will adjourn".
You true of that?
15. Then I added Article 3 before Rule 27, entitled it governance, as in stealing this ordinance, this resolution, this motion to, you know, types of governance that we're all in issue. And then Rule 29, probably the most changed, disruption by commissioners. "When in the opinion of the Chair or other commissioners, the conduct of one or more commissioners, including the Chair, is detrimental to the function of the Commission during the meeting", so I added, "Including the Chair", in case the Chair is the one that's disruptive. "Two or more members of the Commission may require that the Chair, or other officer, in the event that the disruption came from the Chair", so basically, if the disruption's coming from the Chair, then it would be the Vice Chair that can call a question.
Call the question.
Right. So then Article 3 becomes Article 4, based on the addition of the governance, and...
That's it.
That's all, that's it to me.
No, he only had four more that he talked about.
I would just like to say that, you know, this, I do understand, you being, you know, like, a bit wary and like wanting to make sure that everything is completely, completely in line as needed, but I do have a lot of trust in both Commissioner Woolsey and Commissioner Clifford, as well as, I'm trying those, oh, and Engelman was your last name, I know, it's my cold medicine.
Just call me Chip.
I know.
Attorney Chip.
But yes, Attorney Chip, you know, they really, they have, they put a lot of time in, they have the full knowledge, so I think that what they have presented us and everything, you know, it's pretty going forward of what we need. I don't think we need to be going through and being concerned with very, very slight, slight...
Well, you said you had four more, so we'll think that's a bit of a problem.
Just let it finish.
Oh, I just wanted to make that statement.
But we had to call the question, that's second, to call the question.
To end the discussion.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, this is a request, I think it would be helpful, at least some of us, if we go back to the expressions we had, if we provided hard copies.
We'll get them the next reading.
And, okay, all the questions on the floor.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
What am I voting on?
Voting on the issue.
Calling the question, isn't it?
To call on questions, that you say, we're getting ready to vote on the issue, but now first we gotta vote to close out discussion.
No, we're voting to adopt this ordinance.
Okay.
Well, we gotta vote to close the discussion of the vote.
Okay.
Okay, we're back to close the discussion. So did someone make a motion to close the discussion? No.
I didn't hear that either.
I did. I moved, and I have second, and so, Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Can you reset the motion for the record, please, whoever made it?
I moved that we call the question and close discussion to get prepared for the vote.
Close the discussion, yes.
And closing the discussion to get ready for the vote on adopting them.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Hesitating.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey? Yes. Motion goes.
Okay, now we got one on the top of the list.
Adoption.
This motion is to adopt the ordinance.
First reading.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Poston? Yes. Commissioner Woolsey? Yes. Motion varies. I make a motion for adjournment. Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawton?
Yes.
Commissioner Platt?
Aye.
Commissioner Poston? Yes. Commissioner Woolsey? Yes. Motion varies.